Okay, thank you everybody for being here. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees to order. Today December 8th at seven, eight oh eight PM. Can we have the roll please?
Village President Torpey.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Cullum.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford is absent. Trustee Levison.
Present.
Trustee Rosner.
Here.
Trustee Schnall.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Lerner.
Here.
Mr. Rother.
Here.
Susan Caljean, present. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10 colon four dash six. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted in Village Hall and on the Village website and has been filed in the office of the Village Clerk. Official action may be taken. Susan Caljean, Village.
Thank you. We have one resolution to go into executive session.
Resolution three thirteen, resolution authorizing an executive session at the December 8th, 2014 meeting of the Board of Trustees.
There are two matters to be discussed in executive session. One is Orange Lawn, which is an attorney-client privilege, and the other is Mary Lawn, which is an attorney-client privilege. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Moved by Trustee Cullum, seconded by Trustee Levison. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? We'll be back here at eight thirty.
What up to three? Are they going back up to main conference room?
Is that for you or for me?
Yeah, should be vaguely heating.
Can I have that bookshelf back there?
Okay, I'll answer. I'll go on there. Uh, I'm not sure.
Can I have that show up?
Uh, everyone starts at number three?
That's fine, I'll see that.
Okay, great. Thanks for your time.
Well, it tells me if you may have a connection to that.
Yeah.
Well, no, we, yeah, I got connection.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Good question.
That's what it works.
Hey, Steve, do you want to see if Alex will bump up the discussion item for the presentation?
Yeah. There's a few, uh...
Oh, yes, I saw that. I saw that. I saw that. Some of these quotes would be good. They're all the ones. Yeah, I saw them.
Actually, the next book, discussion item. Why don't we put the discussion item?
Yeah.
No, I'm.
The board is done.
He only last.
Oh. Don't make her.
She seems very much be quiet now.
So today's.
Right. Well, we can talk about switching order.
Good for Jake.
You wanna do the.
With that, he and Alex. Hmm?
Yeah.
Alex, you don't hear us.
Yeah, yeah.
Mark, we share everyone. Sorry?
What's the problem?
No, I just wanna move up the. Cute.
Should we? Good thought work. Hope you did well. Fuck, okay. Who am I, guy?
Is she?
Yes, you're really inspiring.
She, yeah. Will we ask him to come? Will we ask him here to speak or just we go back first?
No, he's studying.
Speak.
Yeah.
All right. Check whether we got.
Hold on, I will just make sure that this can keep this on me.
Chance of a bet. Okay, thank you, everybody, for being here. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees back to order at eight thirty-nine P M. Um, could we have the roll again, please?
Village President Torpe.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Column.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ward.
Here.
Trustee Levinson.
Present.
Trustee Roster.
Here.
Trustee Callum.
Here.
Mister Lewis.
Here.
Mister Leonard.
Here.
Mister Rother.
Here.
Susan G. James.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a Moment of Silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Please stay standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, let's get started with a, uh, with a couple announcements here. Um, the first is if there's anybody interested in volunteering with the village, uh, we do have two alternate positions available on the zoning board of adjustment, um, and we have one alternate position available on the board of health. Um, so if you are interested in getting involved in either of those, please send us an email. Um, and you can go online. Uh, if you wanna learn more, you can send us an email at info@southorange.org. Um, otherwise, you can go online and if you find the volunteering link, um, you can submit your name and information and we'll be happy to get back, um, reach back out to you.
Alex, I'm gonna jump in for a second and say there's also an alternate spot available now for the environmental commission.
Okay, so and also an alternate spot for the environmental commission. Great. Um, just a reminder, leaf collection is over. Um, there are no more plans to pick up leaves, so if you're clearing your leaves, doing some late fall would be a, uh, an exaggeration at this point, um, on work. Um, please make sure to dispose of them properly down at D P W, um, or make sure that your landscapers, um, do clear them away. Um, First Night, Maplewood-South Orange, um, First Night is back. Um, so we, it will be from, starting at five P M, um, on December thirty-first at Columbia High School with a, uh, a wide range of entertainment, including magicians, circus tent, uh, DJ, crafts, um, and the New Jersey's greatest party band, The Nerds, um, which is not this group of people up here. I was. And then we'll conclude with a fireworks display. Um, you can pick up admission wristbands, um, at local merchants around town, including Spark House and Kitchen Alamoade, and you can also get them online or learn more at firstnightmws o dot org. Um, winter recreation, the classes will begin in January, uh, the art class will begin in January and winter sports beginning now. Um, if you need any more information about that, um, you can visit thebear.org. Um, so this past Small Business Saturday was very exciting. The Village Center Alliance awarded seven hundred dollars in gift certificates, um, to three winners of the Small Business Saturday promotion. Um, Carla Braithwaite of South Orange won the grand prize of five hundred dollars, um, in gift certificates to local merchants, um, for shopping in downtown on Small Business Saturday, and runners-up, uh, Evan Levy and Leslie Gilman each won one hundred dollars in gift certificates. Um, the Village Center Alliance received over two hundred thirty entries for the contest, um, and several of our merchants let us know that they had their most successful Small Business Saturday ever, which is great. So thank you, everybody, for supporting our downtown merchants. Um, the Village Center Alliance in Main Street, New Jersey, are presenting the N J three fifty pop-up store, and this is from Thursday, December eleventh through Saturday, uh, December fourteenth, um, at sixty-five South Orange Ave, the former spot of Love and Yogurt. Um, N J three fifty pop-up store commemorates New Jersey's three hundred fiftieth anniversary, um, and there will be a whole bunch of different New Jersey and South Orange themed merchandise and gift item from local merchants. Um, so make sure to check out the store. It will be open twelve to six on Thursday, Friday, uh, and that Sunday, and twelve to eight on the Saturday. Um, so we've got a couple exciting holiday announcements. Um, the Village Center Alliance and the Baird are presenting Hometown Holiday, um, a day-long holiday celebration in the Village Center on Saturday, December thirteenth. Um, this is sponsored by the Lickman Rabney team of Keller Williams. Kids can get their picture taken with Santa at the firehouse from two to five. There'll be free hot chocolate and cookies, um, as well as musicians from Mark Murphy, dancers from the Maria Pradka School of Dance, and the Red Scarf Singers, Carolyn Group, from the South Orange Historical and Preservation Society. Santa and his elves will make their way up South Orange Ave in time for the tree lighting ceremony at seventy-six South Orange Ave, which is promptly at five fifteen P M. Um, the day before, there is, we are proud to announce the Light Up the Holidays on Irvington Avenue, so Friday, December twelfth, um, from five thirty to eight P M, head up to Irvington Ave. This is sponsored by the Village, um, the Irvington Ave Advisory Committee, and the Seton Hall Student Government. Um, there'll be a tree lighting, music, kids' activities, and a whole lot more. Um, and on December, Sunday, December twenty-first, um, from five to six thirty P M in Spiota Park, um, we are having a menorah lighting ceremony. Um, you can join us for music, hot chocolate, and jelly doughnuts. Um, and just a reminder that due to the holidays, uh, the Village Hall offices will be closed on the following dates. Um, so it's, uh, Thursday, December twenty-fifth, um, the day after Christmas, Friday, December twenty-sixth, and Thursday, January first, New Year's Day. Um, and I know I can, we have, uh, one more board meeting, which is a, um, just a note in the schedule difference, which is one week from today, um, changing our schedule so that we're not meeting, um, the week of Christmas. So make sure to note that as well. Um, so we have a couple presentations this evening. The first is from the Historic Preservation Commission. So please come on up.
Good evening, President Torpe, Board of Trustees. Gary Hill, uh, Chairman of the Historic Preservation Committee. Come in. Um, you should have all received a letter from our committee in your packets today, and it, this letter is a follow-up to our initial conversation or, uh, letter to you on, uh, September eighth, and I'll just read the first paragraph to give you an overview of what it does. Its purpose is to emphasize and provide with addition, additional hard evidence of the positive economic impact and significant monetary benefit that the investment in historic preservation has on communities in New Jersey and the nation as a whole. It will also address the impact of historic preservation has on area residents who cite historic buildings as their reason for moving here, and who spread the word about the value of moving to the community to, to potential new residents. This all, again, comes from us sharing information with you to show that buildings such as the, our town hall are important to the community and add value monetarily as well. So, uh, I hope you all take the time to read it. There are sources in the back, uh, so that where, that we give reference to. They're all can, are available online, and, uh, if you have any questions, we're always, uh, meeting the third Thurs, or the third Tuesday of every month. All right? Annie, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any quick questions?
Well, I, I just wanna, uh, single out, uh, the commission. I thought they did a really good job, uh, in not only taking an ideological stance, but actually an, an economic, uh, and quantitative approach, uh, to, to their beliefs, and actually, I think that was very valuable, and I appreciate your sharing it, uh, and having the reference, uh, sources behind that makes it even more, uh, powerful, and we will certainly consider it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
I have one more question.
Yes.
How do you, and I didn't get to look at kind of the, the links or where you had, um, gotten this data from. How are you differentiating between, um, municipal purposes or adaptive reuse of historic structures? Because on, under either scenario that the village is considering, it's still a historic structure, so I'm trying to understand kind of the two options and how you would monetize those versus saying historic structure that's adaptive reuse versus historic structure that's municipal government.
Uh, the two, one of the references is a Rutgers, um, piece, uh, studying, showing that the economic development in jobs and also tourism that comes from people who are, want to see historic sites. Um, it doesn't really differentiate between the two areas. It just talks about, um, revamping these and redoing them brings jobs to the community. It also talks about the, again, the impact of people wanting to live in the, um, town because of the historic, uh, preservations of these buildings, and thirdly, it talks just about the, the tourism of people wanting to come to a village that has that historic sites and a downtown like that. Those are where it was. It really doesn't go into adaptive re, uh, uses.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, and next, um, we have a very exciting announcement, um, from Doug Zachar from the Irvington Ave Advisory Committee.
Good evening, everyone. Um, first, uh, I wanna thank the Board of Trustees for all of your support for the work that we've been doing on Irvington Avenue since the committee was formed in February. I also wanna thank the Department of Public Works, which has been, which has provided much of the muscle that's been needed to make the area look great and make our events run smoothly, and thank you to all of the volunteers that have been instrumental to everything that's been done. And lastly, I wanna thank my fellow committee members for all of their time, thought, and inspiration. For those in the room and anyone watching at home who are not aware of the Irvington Avenue Corridor Advisory Committee, we are an advisory committee to the Board of Trustees. Our mission is to create a thriving Irvington Avenue, which attracts patrons, residents, and the university community with diverse shops and restaurants, and a safe, attractive, and vibrant neighborhood. When we started the process of reimagining Irvington Avenue, it quickly became clear that we needed to make the area easily identifiable. In order to achieve our mission, simply referring to it as Irvington Avenue wasn't going to work. Irvington Avenue is long, and it winds its way through three towns. Simply being told that a store, restaurant, or an event is happening on Irvington Avenue won't get anyone there. The area needed a name and a brand, much like South Orange Village Center. So, along with beautifying the area, holding some great events like the Craft Beer and Food Truck Festival, working to improve the existing businesses, and partnering with the D P W to make the area brighter, we set out to find a name. Our marketing subcommittee took on the task by doing a lot of brainstorming within meetings and with, uh, and a lot of brainstorming with the public via social media. This creative town of ours was definitely not short on suggestions. The list was honed down to three finalists. Excuse me. Uh, South Orange Uptown, sort of a directional type name. Uh, Seton Village, a name that acknowledges our proximity to Seton Hall, and Irvine, sort of a inspirational theme that we could kind of fill with whatever we want. We put those choices out for a non-binding online vote, and the winner was Seton Village. Seeing that Seton Village won in all demographic categories, so in other words, students thought it was the best, residents thought it was the best, shoppers on Irvington Avenue thought it was the best. Um, and that made me lose my place. Oh, so they all, so it won in all Democrat, in all demographic categories, and, uh, also knowing that all of our research up to this point, uh, points to a close association between the Irvington Avenue Corridor and Seton Hall University. The name Seton Hall was easily the winner amongst the Irvington Avenue Corridor Advisory Committee as well. So next came the creation of an identity through a logo. We worked with I T O, the same company that created the identity for South Orange Village Center. Our primary goal was to create something that is obviously related to South Orange Village Center, but also stands on its own. After all, we are two business districts within one great town. I think we hit the mark. So, without further ado, I introduce you to Seton Village. Thank you all. Any questions, comments, I guess?
Yes, I like it.
Wonderful.
When do we, when do we have to stop referring to Irving, Irvington Avenue and only Seton Village? When's the cutover date?
The cutover, right now. This is it. It begins here.
And I believe the banners will be going up this week with our Department of Public Works.
Yes, the banners are gonna be going up. Uh, the goal was tomorrow, but I spoke to Tommy and he said the next time the weather's nice.
Yeah.
And after he deals with anything from.
That might.
Leaves and snow. So, yes, we will be patient, but they should be up, uh, by Friday. The goal is to have them up by Friday, uh, which is when, uh, the tree lighting up on Irvington Avenue is gonna be.
I, I think you guys know this, and it's, it's certainly worth saying, um, and we've got a bunch of committee members in the audience here.
Woo!
Which hopefully, I guess people at home probably can't see that, but perhaps they can. Um, but anyway, I just wanted to say that, um, you know, personally, and I, and I think that everybody shares a sentiment that, you know, the work that you guys are doing embodies exactly, you know, how amazing a group of volunteers, residents, and business owners can be. Um, and everybody who lives in town who has seen the progress of what's happened on Irvington Ave, um, Seton, Seton Village, sorry.
Uh-huh, see?
Starting now.
Yeah.
Um, you know, everybody comments on it, and, um, you know, all the events that are happening and, I mean, in the business, it's just, um, it's really amazing, um, that the neighborhood that deserves this kind of recognition and identity is getting it, um, and it's getting it not because of, you know, lots and lots of money, or not because of necessarily laws being changed one way or the other, although there's certainly been little ordinances here and there, but it's really the hard work of you guys and of Trustee Column and members of the board who have really put in just a tremendous amount of time, and I think you guys should just all get an extra round of applause for all the work that you've done. It is really great.
Thank you, and thank, thank you all for your support.
Okay, pause before, before you leave. I'm gonna embarrass you a little bit. So you got through thanking everyone. Um, but I think that most of our advisory committees and boards rise and fall based on their leader, and Doug, you've been a tremendous asset to the Irvington Avenue Corridor Advisory Committee, hopefully to be changed to the Seton Village Advisory Committee, but, um, Doug really goes out of his way. We've created, um, a lot of different working groups within the I A C A C, and, uh, Doug shows up to everything. So he's there to support all the subcommittee heads, um, works directly with the Board of Trustees, coordinates with our staff and our various departments, and we would not be as successful as we are today with all the initiatives without his leadership on this committee. So a thank you to you, Doug.
Thank you.
And that leads me to a thought. To, for branding purposes, should we now have an amended resolution changing the committee to the Seton Village, um, committee as opposed to the Irvington Avenue?
Absolutely.
So I.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, that, that's, that will make our branding effective.
Why don't we go ahead and prepare that? We can prepare that for the next meeting. I know there's been a little bit of turnover, too, within the committee, so we can work on just, um, amending the resolution and reintroducing it at our next board meeting.
Have to change the name of the base camp. We're gonna have to do a lot.
I know.
Lots of change. Lots of stuff, lots of stuff, but we will take care of it all.
And the final plug for this Friday, um, December twelfth, five thirty to eight o'clock. Alex read it during the announcements, but it's gonna be, I believe, the first real big holiday event that's occurring on Irvington Avenue, and there's a lot of.
In Seton Village.
In Seton Village.
Yes, we noticed we have, we have our very own tree. We were staring at it, and we saw that there's a tree that, uh, that Tommy's guys put lights on. It's gonna be lit up. There's gonna be acapella singers from Seton, uh, from Seton Hall. Uh, there's gonna be a jazz musician. There's gonna be crafts. Kids are gonna make great little necklaces.
And they're performing where? In Seton Village.
There we go.
All right.
All right, thank you. And a shout-out to my kids at home.
TV store.
Um, so before we move on too much farther, I, um, I was asked by, uh, Trustee Schnall, who was presenting on a wellness program earlier, 'cause we, I know we have at least one member of the audience here, um, that may be commenting on that. If we could move that discussion up to the beginning of the meeting, um, so.
That'd be great.
Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
All right. Um, so Trustee Schnall?
Yeah, so, um, this is initiative that, uh, resident and physician in South Orange, uh, Dr. Hugh Snyder, had come actually, uh, to Trustee Column, uh, asking about how he could participate and help the community, uh, to improve their own health and wellness, and through many different means, and, uh, Trustee Column and I sat with, with Dr. Snyder. And Trustee Column and I sat with, with Dr. Snyder, who we're going to ask to come up here actually, and to talk about his program. And, well, actually, why don't we just do that? We'll let you introduce it, and then we can fill in some information from there.
My name's Hugh Snyder. I live on Irving Ave. I've been in South Orange for about 10 years now. Have a practice and summit, planning on opening an office in South Orange, involved with the medical school at Rutgers, and I'm one of the staff physicians at the Seton Hall Health Center. So anyway, the, the thing that Dr., that Steve and Sheena and I have been working on is a concept that the New Jersey Healthcare Quality Institute, in cooperation with the League of Municipalities, had come up with and sort of encouraged municipalities to promote. They have this little website with like a toolbox and different ideas of what sort of the government can do to change the culture, to encourage healthy behaviors among employees of the, of the town, the Board of Education, and the residents, and anyone else who wants to participate. And I hadn't heard about it as a municipal government event, because that's not what I do. I was at a Super Bowl party in Nutley, and people were commenting on how much weight these two people had lost. And, you know, being a private care physician, I sort of perk up, "Oh, you lost weight? How'd you do it?" And they said, "We enrolled in this thing in our town." And the more they explained it to me, the greater of an idea it seemed to be. And I said, "We should do that in South Orange." And so I just started talking about it to everybody I could, and Sheena called me back and said, "Let's, let's do this." So, you know, that's the basic, you know, origin of it. The nuts and bolts of it is that, you know, it'd be sort of set up as a weight loss competition. People will enroll and will sort of have the structure of that. The incentives will be a monthly sort of prize for whoever has made the greatest strides during that time period. And then at the end of it, and we're sort of looking to make it a five-month thing, sort of more impressive prize at the end. And the idea is that you're going to get these incentives from local businesses, and that the group of people who have enrolled in this will be invited by local businesses that have some kind of health or wellness product to get a discount or a free kickboxing lesson or something. And so, for the businesses' standpoint, this is a pre-selected, very well-targeted market. This is people who have decided that they're going to initiate this lifestyle change. So we're going to pair the business with the population in a way that's hopefully mutually beneficial, and it sort of has the blessing of, of the town as a whole. You know, what happened in Nutley, they did it for two or three years, and it became very large and became kind of a big phenomenon in town. And so I have aspirations for us to achieve the same kind of thing, where everyone kind of gets a piece of it. The local restaurants will have their special list and have something on there that's designated to be slightly healthier. And it'll sort of have the stamp that, you know, this is part of this town-wide initiative for well, health and wellness. People will wear T-shirts, and I would, in my fantasy, people will be going for a walk, and people will be tooting their horn. The, the weight loss efforts that usually are felt, everywhere I turn, there's temptation. We'll turn that around. Everywhere that they turn, that people are turning, there's support. And so, it's a, it seemed to me like an idea that didn't have a downside. And so, Trustee Schnall and Trustee Column and I have been sort of rallying all of our contacts. I have connections to the Rutgers Medical School, and through that, the nursing school. Sheena and I both have a connection to Seton Hall, and so we're reaching out to them. And I've also communicated with the Atlantic Health System about providing a small stipend, startup funds for it. And what I'm here to sort of get is South Orange Board of Trustees stamp of approval. I'd like the sponsorship to be, Seton Hall, Rutgers, Atlantic Health, and the township, the Village of South Orange present this thing.
I think that's a wonderful idea, but this is the first time I'm hearing of it.
That's what I hear.
It's a wonderful idea, because I, I chair and the liaison to the Health Committee, and I'm just hearing of this, and members of the, my legal committee, health and personnel, and the liaison, we've been discussing wellness initiatives for months. And so, you know-
Invited to join.
I'm just hearing this, and as the liaison and chair, I think that's wonderful. So what I would suggest, you know, being the chair and the leadership for something that's so wonderful that you're bringing to the attention, I'd like to put you on my agenda, and we can talk about it in the committee. That would be wonderful.
Tell me when and when.
So I will reach out to you and schedule you on the agenda to have a discussion about that.
That's what I was hoping someone would say.
And if probably we can incorporate it into things that we've been working on for months.
Yeah.
But thanks for bringing it to the attention, because it's great to finally hear about that.
Good.
Yeah, just, just to add, so actually, the Recreation Cultural Arts Committee has talked about it, and so that's part of it. It will be sponsored as a Baird program. Part of the sponsorship, this is, we're endeavoring to have Seton Hall be a participant.
It's a wonderful idea.
And, yeah, so I want to thank you, because one of the, the things that you talked about, that you said, you used the word "culture," I guess referring to Nutley. And I think that, in addition to the participants, so let's say there's 100 participants in this first time, and that's wonderful, then hopefully they'll get benefits, but I really, what really I think is tremendous is, as this program, I assume, if it's successful, will continue to grow, is it will be a cultural thing. It's a phenomenon that will go beyond just the singular participants who participate in, in a weight loss program, but I think it will impact their families, their friends, and others will want to watch what they're doing, then hopefully eventually participate. So I think it's, it's really a terrific idea.
Those are the hopes and aspirations I have for the program.
Do you want to go over a little bit about what you're thinking about the registration categories, and how people would sign up, and kind of the timeline, the ideal timeline? And this will be a great partnership between both committees. There's the recreation side, the fitness, the activities, all that, and then there's kind of the health and wellness side, which Trustee Davis Ford works on. So between two committees, we'll probably get the maximum exposure to the community at large.
Yeah. And also, just to respond to your comments, like I said, I was pitching this to anybody who would hear it. I'm sorry if I didn't mention it to you or realize that that would have been a good resource, but now that I'm getting it going, everybody's invited.
Doctor, how would you know?
Well-
How would you know?
By coming here, I guess.
I just wasn't invited, but how would you know?
So to, to answer the question, you know, I've been kicking this idea around. I'm not married to the details of it, but in some brainstorming sessions, we've come up with a sort of concept to keep it manageable. You know, I think when I really think about it, I want it to be as big as Nutley's was in its third year, but that's probably not how they started, and it's not realistic place for us to start. So, we were sort of setting an arbitrary limit of, of only letting 100 people participate so that we could learn the nuts and bolts of actually collecting weights and having it be somewhat legitimate. We wanted to speak to Seton Hall. When I first got the idea, I did pitch it to some of the leadership at Seton Hall. They're very enthusiastic, and sort of, we're sort of reconfirming their, their various commitments, but the, the idea that, you know, midway through this, the, the year, at the beginning of second semester, after the freshman 15 may have appeared, that this would be a good time. People know their schedules and, and could commit to something like this. And so, you know, one of the ideas is that this is really going to be a partnership that's going to include Seton Hall and their population and ours, and, you know, being healthy is something we all share. And so I think if we can offer something to the Seton Hall students, and, you know, fingers crossed, Seton Hall can offer something to the residents to, to be mutually beneficial, in this first year, we're going to try to reserve 25 spots for Seton Hall students out of the 100, which is open to the general public. And so with that in mind, we're, we're going to, we're saying that we would probably have to run sort of a separate timeline for Seton Hall. Their return from the break is going to sort of zig their start date, when we wanted to have it be on New Year's Day, kind of as the, you know, New Year's resolution kick-in time, and then, you know, we want it to finish before everyone leaves for the summer. So it would sort of be a separate one that would, that would encourage the Seton Hall students to feel included. But, so the January 1st would be the start date for, for the sort of ideal, have it run for about five months, have it end in June, so people could, could feel that they've completed something before summer breaks start and things along those lines. And then towards that, we were going to divide it into two, you know, each sort of winning period, or, you know, measurement of weight period, have both individual top performers, and then have people, if they want to, compete as teams, and then just average the weight change through the whole group. And, you know, that would sort of, I think, give it a social aspect, then also allow people to encourage one another to be their best, whereas as an individual, you sort of have to have a different type of determination. And so they would have the individual team and then a Seton Hall prize at each level, so that people are sort of competing with demographics somewhat similar to themselves. Whereas arbitrarily pick $20 as an entry thing, sort of get people to actually be committed, sign a waiver. I think the town has a standard waiver that we, we're going to borrow. And then you get a T-shirt. And, you know, this is minor commitment, I think-
You said the town has a standard waiver? What does that mean?
There was something that the, I think Baird Center, the, the Board of Rec uses for events, just so people sign that they understand that physical activity carries some risk. I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, but there was something that was deemed acceptable in a previous setting that one of the trustees found for me.
Okay.
I don't know, if you wanted to make that available.
I just have a comment as well, and I don't know if you're going to report it, when you report out your committee, about what we've been doing internally for, for the village employees. We've been speaking to St. Bonaventure for a program that they're presenting. Are you going to present that?
Yeah, I'm going to speak about it in my committee report, but, you know, if you want to talk about it, that's fine, but-
Yeah, that came up actually when we were discussing it, and, you know, this sort of, everyone's invited approach is what, is what, I heard that, I said, "Good." What, what I'd like to do, in addition to the underlying competition, is sort of use it as a platform and sort of branding of-
I would have loved to talk to you since I've been working on this, but I'm just hearing it for the first time.
We will continue talking.
So I think it's wonderful.
Yeah.
I love, I, I love what you're saying, and I'm definitely going to put you on the agenda so you can come and talk to the, you know, the committee.
Yep, so, so that-
So we can have a holistic, integrated approach.
Absolutely.
Because we are, you know, a team here and a board, you know, so.
Absolutely.
When is your next legal? Because this is a good time for perhaps you and Trustee Schnall to coordinate between rec and legal. Can you get Dr. Hugh on the, because Recreation met about it today, correct?
December 15th.
So the 15th?
Next Monday.
Okay.
Monday, before the meeting.
Okay. Well, do you want to invite Dr. Hugh to come? Would that one be a good meeting for you?
Yep, that would be wonderful.
Okay.
I do have a question for Barry. Do you know if the Mel has a program as well? Barry? Do you know if the Mel has a program as well?
Who does?
The Mel.
The Mel. Well, I know, for those, the Mel's municipal excess liability case, the umbrella coverage for virtually all the joint insurance funds, municipal joint insurance funds across the state, they, they have a number of things, I think, that they promote, largely materials and informational materials that largely, again, directed, which is part of, I think, where the confusion arose here. Trustee Davis Ford chairs Legal and Personnel Committee, which is obviously focused on personnel, meaning the town employees, and we have been discussing for quite some time now wellness-related initiatives to our employees, whereas rec, on the other hand, is more geared towards the general public. And I think there's an opportunity to kind of synergize the two of them, and these two programs with, obviously are both great, and certainly, I think our intention, certainly at the legal and personnel level, is not only for the, the, just the overall good of our employees, but also healthy employees are good for the town. There's fewer sick days, there's fewer injuries, fewer workers' comp claims, fewer disabilities claims. So I think it does all dovetail, and certainly the Mel is, will be another component of that.
Well, something that they have, I think Mel had a program with Maplewood, where they were walking around with the pedometers.
Now, I think that may have been associated with the Mayor's Wellness Campaign, which is also via the League of Municipalities, which is what Dr. Snyder referred to. But, no, I, I, again, I think these sort of separate but related initiatives sort of sound like they developed under two different committees. One focusing internally on our personnel and apparently Recreation, which I'm not privy to, developing theirs for the, sort of the general public. But I, I think it's a great idea to kind of bring the two together and see how we can, you know, each work on what, what obviously has, I think, a very good common goal for the citizens and the employees.
So do we want to continue more of the conversation tonight, or do we want to follow up in the legal committee as, as the next step?
Following committee, unless there's something else.
Are they, are there any other questions from the board? Great.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Detective.
Thank you.
And if there's any member of the public who wishes to be part of that conversation too, they're certainly welcome to come to the legal committee meeting.
Absolutely.
Which is upstairs, right?
It's a, it's an, it's open to the public.
And that's at 6:15?
Mm-hmm.
Here at Sopac.
Yep, in Sopac. Okay. So it's time, I'd like to open the meeting up for public comments, if there's anybody who wishes to speak.
Yo, who's the bell?
A movie star.
May I approach the stage?
Is this, is public comment, is there a mic here? I know you love the stage.
I do.
Testing, testing. Is this working? Is everybody hearing?
Yes, it is.
Excellent. All right. My name's Richard Bell, for those of you who don't know me. From 321 Walton Ave, and I'm the president of the Farrow Field Park Conservancy. Yeah, no applause, please.
I'm a fan.
Yes, thank you. I'm here tonight along with a contingent from the Conservancy. Wave, thank you. We love you. The reason we're here, there's a couple of reasons. The first one, actually, the first one is to officially welcome into, from one neighborhood association to another, into the bosom of South Orange neighborhoods, Satan Village. Welcome, Satan Village. That was, that's a wonderful banner. It's exciting. The next thing, we want, we're here to thank you, basically. First of all, for including us in the process, when we came last time, we asked to be included in the process of deciding what to do with the animal shelter building. So, we're here to thank you for starting to include us in that process, to let you know that we've met. We have a, a committee that's met, there's about 10 people on the committee.
Wonderful.
And we started to talk about ideas, and to just let you know that if you need anything from us, we're here, ask us, and we will, we will help, if you and what you're trying to do. We wanted to ask if there was any update. I, we know that there's still litigation going on, so we don't know if you can update us at all, but if you can, give us an idea of what is happening, that would be great. But we're here to just say we're moving forward, and thank you for that. The second reason we're here is to thank you again for the new playground equipment in Farrow Field. Well, actually, our playground committee worked with Kate Schmidt from the Recreation Department and Steve Schnall, over this, and Walter, over this past year, to select equipment, and it was ordered, and it was delivered this week, and it's in the park. It's not going to be installed during the nor'easter, I know, but if anybody knows an update when it will be installed, that would be great. I think Kate said, she had told me by the end of this week, but I'm thinking that's a little optimistic.
Yeah, because of bad markets.
So if anybody knows, let us know. And then the other reason is, we want to invite you, the Board of Trustees, and everybody, actually, to a ribbon-cutting ceremony in January for the playground. We're going to invite the Farrow family, who have become very excited, they follow us on Facebook, they're very excited about what's happening with the park. So we want to have hot chocolate, because it's going to be cold, but we want to have a little ceremony to kind of christen the playground. And you guys are welcome to come. It's probably going to be the weekend of January 10th and 11th. And I think that's everything. Did I cover everything? Okay, I got the thumbs up. If you can answer those questions, that would be great.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to, to speak at this time? Okay, closed public comments. I don't know if Mr. Lewis or Mr. Lerner, you have any update related to Mr. Bell's question? question?
The litigation is still continuing, the judge is kind of sitting on it, so we're kind of in a holding pattern. Nothing's changed from last week. We are, we do have access to the building, so we're making sure that it is protected, that it's going to stay in the condition that we received it in, no bursting pipes or anything like that with the weather come, change in weather. And hopefully we'll have a cleaning crew out there shortly just to kind of get it cleaned up. But outside of that, we're just in a holding pattern until we can figure out what the judge will allow us or not allow us to do, so.
Okay. Thank you. All right, let's move on to the approval of our minutes. The first is October 13th and 27th, conference and regular meetings. Moved by trustee Rosner.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Cullen, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Okay. Next is November 10th and 24th.
I move.
Meetings, moved by trustee Cullen.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Levinson. Got to speak up? Any opposed or abstentions? Trustee Clark?
No.
Excellent. I'm going to do that every time we vote. Great, let's move on to ordinances for first reading.
Ordinance 2014-22, introduction and first reading of an ordinance to amend Article 10 of the Code of the Township of South Orange Village to create a new subsection entitled Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs Fees, and to amend subsection 5-71 to permit the Director of Recreation and Cultural Affairs to create appropriate rules and regulations.
Okay, trustee Schnall or Mr. Lewis, is there anything that you want to add about this fee schedule?
My understanding is, this comes from past audit comments from prior years, that this is something we should have had in place. As far as I know, the actual fee structure that's being listed on this, this ordinance is the same that we've had in place, there's no significant changes, it just is codifying them. There is some discussion, and this will allow us, since it's published, so everybody can see it, there is some, for future meetings, to talk about whether those fees are appropriate, if they should be making any changes, but for my understanding right now, this is just a codification of an existing fee schedule.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a motion?
I'm-
Second.
Moved by trustee Levinson.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Schnall.
I was just getting your attention from Walter.
Proxy attention getter. Do we have the roll, please?
Trustee Rosner.
Yes.
Trustee Schnall.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Cullen.
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Trustee Levinson.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we have another ordinance for introduction and first reading, it's ordinance 2014-23, a refunding bond ordinance providing for the funding of certain emergency appropriations arising out of the satisfaction of certain successful property tax appeals in the township of South Orange Village in the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, and authorizing the issuance of not exceeding $665,000 in aggregate principal amount of refunding bonds for funding such obligations.
Thank you. Trustee Levinson or Mr. Lewis, is there anything you want to add here?
Yeah, again, and we do apologize for the last minute addition, this was something that throughout the course of the year, the CFO monitors, and we did experience a sufficiently high amount of tax appeal refunds. These are largely appeals that date back at, as far back as 2009, and then more come on in '10, '11, and then as these appeals are pending each subsequent year, they continue to appeal, so we had a pretty significant number. This is hopefully the last real significant batch of those that started in the recession in the 2008, 2009 range. The village did later do a reassessment, which has hit the books in 2012, I believe, which has seemed to have stabilized and stemmed the tide of the appeals. This process is, in addition to the ordinance, there will be, there's two resolutions, which, to your pleasure, we can either add on at the time of the resolutions, or we can do now as part of this whole transaction, but essentially, this allows us, the $665,000 refunds, to spread that out over a few-year period. It is subject to approval by the local finance board. One of the resolutions is authorizing, making that application to the local finance board, and the other resolution is certainly, is authorizing the emerg, technically, they're called emergency appropriations, which then permits you the leeway to fund it over a number of years. So the other caveat to this is, needs to be, the ordinance needs to be adopted in calendar year 2014. So as I indicated in the email, and I don't know if we can do it now, but if not, we will do it and certainly provide that notice on the website and in the publication, but we would, in order to allow sufficient time for it to be published sufficiently in advance of the public hearing and adoption, it could not be done because we moved our meeting up to February, to December 15th, next Monday, does not allow adequate time for that publication. So we will be soliciting and suggesting a special, very short, literally five-minute special meeting for a public hearing and potential adoption of this ordinance. If people are, know their calendars now, we can try and settle on a date. If not, I can certainly circulate that, but I would guess, given the holidays intervening and everything else, we're probably looking at December 29th or 30th or potentially 31st. Again, and that is the type of meeting those that could only do so could be available, and we could have it done telephonically, people could appear telephonically, anyone who's local and has the ability to appear in person, we could do that as well.
I just have one comment that goes along with that, which is very concerning, that all of these refunds are 100% refunds, which includes both the school tax as well as the county tax. The burden is not only just to refund the amount that the village got, but it's refunding to the school district and the county as well, which is about 75% of the refund.
And who's responsible for ensuring that the resident, the property owner gets the county of school tax? Is that burden on us, or is it on the entities that taxed it?
No, and that is to trustee Levinson's point, that it is, the way the statutes are set up, we bear the entire risk, we bear the risk of collection at the outset, so on any given year, we collect all, we bill and collect taxes, the school gets 100%, the county gets 100%, and we get whatever, so if we only collect 98%, we're only getting 98% of the total. And unfortunately, also, in the case of tax appeals, during the penancy of the appeal, anyone who's appealing is obligated to pay the taxes, the school gets their money, the county gets their money, and if the appeal is either adjudicated via tax court or the tax board adverse to us, or if there's a settlement adverse to us, so that a refund is due, the village alone has to refund all this money, and we don't get to go back to the school and say, "Give it back," nor do we get to go back to the county and say, "Give it back."
That, so, so we're stuck.
Yeah, and it's-
We cannot recoup from the county or the school.
Correct, and that's what makes it challenging and then necessitates the need to spread it out, and certainly, and I'm sure he'll bring it up either now or at a later point, trustee Levinson has suggested that perhaps we should take the lead on pursuing a legislative initiative to address that.
Yes.
I don't think it has big, been as big an issue, certainly in my 18 years in this business, until the last four or five years, when you saw such a flood of tax appeals and where the municipalities were bearing the brunt of that to such, you know, a great extent.
So we have a huge liability.
And I think it got our attention, and maybe it is something to pursue a legislative solution.
So with successful appeals, the village has a huge liability because we have to reimburse these funds.
Correct.
And 75% of it was already-
We've already passed through to somebody else.
Right.
And we don't get to get it back from them.
So, and there's no real recourse for us.
Nope.
Wow.
Barring a legislative solution.
The county is the one who hears the appeals, right?
Pardon me?
The county is the one who hears the appeals.
The county tax board of appeals here is anything up to $750,000, yeah, who-
They have a conflict.
Yeah, they, they don't have anything to lose in the game, so, and then anything above $750,000 assessed value goes to state.
When they give an appeal, they win. And if they don't give an appeal, they win.
They don't, yeah, they don't lose. They already got their money.
Yeah, they get it twice. Well, I think we should have a resolution, at least start the process of seeing if we can do something legislative for it.
And should we also invite our assembly people or our state senate to be involved in this process?
Absolutely.
They have to be.
Yep.
It can't come from us, it has to come from the-
So who's going to take the lead on that initiative? Okay.
I do find it a little hard to believe that with the amount of tax appeals that we've probably seen since 2007, that there's no recourse for our municipality. I mean, has this been raised? Has something been introduced? I can't. I mean, for us, and we're a relatively modest budget compared to some major, larger cities, how, how can they possibly incur the cost of these tax refunds without getting anything back from the schools, which, much like us, I imagine all communities are-
That's almost like a rhetorical statement, how, there's so many unfunded mandates, mandates that come down from the state.
No, I think, I think to the point that Barry was making, that until recently, when property values just went up and up and up, there weren't that many appeals to really consider, but when you had the crash or the bubble ended in '07, '08, it caused all this, the first time really in a long time that you had such a great disparity between the assessed values, appraised values, and what was going on. So it's the first time we've had appeals of such large numbers, and even when you had '90 and '91, when the market somewhat fell apart, the numbers were much smaller. I think that the numbers are so great now, it's really what's made it stand out, especially for a town like us.
You know what I would be interested in knowing?
Having a separate or a shared school system, we're in kind of a position, because most municipalities have budget control.
I don't think a shared school system makes a difference, I think most towns are paying 56, 57.
It's the ratio.
Oh, yes, 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 oh, okay.
Mm-hmm.
So we're changing-
You know what I would be interested in knowing? Since this, successful appeals have happened, I guess maybe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, the successful appeals started happening maybe in '011 or '012?
No, really, sooner. But these, these appeals-
What, what would you say?
As you said in the budget session earlier, these, these tax appeals were mostly from '10 and '11, but they really started, they really started in '08. After the revaluation was '07, the first year it hit was '08, so the first year was '09, '10, and '11, they've, as he's mentioned before, they've stabilized now, so we don't expect it, this is probably the last time we'll have to do a bond ordinance.
So what I'd like to know is the aggregate number, you know, in dollar value, of successful appeals and that financial impact on the village, you know? Nothing complicated, but very simple, straightforward? If you could share that with us?
It's in the budget.
Yeah, I know, but I would still, would like to just see that pulled out.
I think there's an attachment that you sent.
Well, there's a spreadsheet that will give you some of that data, but certainly as far as for the public's benefit and stuff, it would certainly, I think, be worthwhile.
And that's what I would like to really share for the public benefit.
Sort of an overview of the impact it's had, where we currently stand, we are obviously working closely with our assessor and our tax appeal council to gauge where we're at right now. In fact, as we discussed a little earlier this evening in our budget workshop, we're sensitive to this, trying to establish a reserve for tax appeals to avoid situations like this by funding a certain amount in our budget, so we can certainly do that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Or even if, when it's being looked at, if there's a way to withhold some of that in the disbursement in the next year to the schools in the county, so that there's some kind of reserve, not a chance?
No.
It was a good shot.
But, but the way, the remedy to it is, is that the next year, you may be able to deduct that.
That's what I was just saying, like, it seems like a natural remedy, obviously we can't suck it back in real time.
Well, that, if the legislation was amended, and I think what trustee Levinson's suggesting is one potential legislative solution that, you know, he was, which makes some intuitive sense, is let's, you do an audit and a recap of the previous year, and whatever those refunds were, then you adjust it the next year and give a credit one way or another. And, you know, that, that would be a way of sort of, you know, there's a one-year lag, but at least it's, everybody's bearing the same risk of tax appeals.
Trustee Levinson, if you need help on this one, I really like this topic. Let's go, let's go to Trenton.
Let's go to Myler and John.
Myler and, and John McKeon.
Okay. All right, trustee Davis Ford.
I move. Don't you have to move it in second, then I do my little thing?
Yeah, we have to do the ordinance first.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah. Yes, you're right.
Yes.
Let's do that.
Yep, I move.
All right, sounds good. Moved by trustee Davis Ford, seconded by trustee Levinson, can we have the roll?
Trustee Schnall.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Cullen.
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Trustee Levinson.
Yes.
Trustee Rosner.
Yes.
Thank you.
I move that the ordinance 2014-22 and 2014-23 be scheduled for a second reading and the final passage at January 12th, 2015, board meeting, and a public hearing be held at that time for the reference ordinance, and the village clerk has been authorized to take the necessary actions to publish public notice for such hearing.
If I could suggest that the motion to be amended to not include 2014, 23, because that's the one we have to do this calendar year. So certainly 22, the recreation fee, I think the normal course of business, January 12th, so if you'd like to amend your motion to eliminate 2023, and then we'll, what I would suggest is that we then notice that we will solicit everybody's dates and availability. Again, it will likely be the 29th, 30th, or 31st, we will certainly publish it on the website, publish it in the newspaper as required by law and everything we can do, and then even announce it at the next meeting on Monday night on the 15th. We will announce when that special meeting will be held, but it has to be done in calendar year.
I amend to what he just said.
The motion is just for 22. Do you have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Cullen, can we have the roll, please? Or actually, we could just do a voice vote for this, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Okay.
And then I might suggest, only because of sometimes with these things with the LGS, they like the timing to be the same, if you could, within the pile that was given to and emailed you earlier, there are two different resolutions, which I believe the clerk has assigned numbers, one is a resolution, Township of South Orange Village, making application to local finance board pursuant to NJSA 48-251, and the other is resolution authorizing emergency appropriations pursuant to NJSA 48-46, and NJSA 48-48, and authorizing emergency notes to provide for the funding of certain property tax repayment obligations at Township of South Orange Village, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, and satisfaction of certain property tax appeals appropriating not to exceed $665,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of not exceeding $665,000 in aggregate principal amount of emergency notes for the purpose of funding such obligations, all pursuant to NJSA 48-1 at Sequius, and in particular NJSA 48:48 and NJSA 48:41. So I would suggest if there was a motion to approve those two resolutions at this time.
I move.
Okay, moved by trustee Levinson.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Cullen. Voice vote, fine for those? Yeah?
It's money.
Nope, all right, why don't we take a roll?
Yeah, we have to.
And those numbers are resolution 321 and 322. Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Cullen.
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Trustee Levinson.
Yes.
Trustee Rosner.
Yes.
Trustee Schnall.
Yes.
Thank you.
Just a side comment on that as well, it will be appropriated but may be unfunded until there is a need for it.
Okay. Okay, next, I have a couple appointments to the Environmental Commission, so there's one, two, three, four regular members, Siobhan Nolan, Sarah Jane Jellin, Neil Chambers, and David Cracker as regular members of the South Orange Environmental Commission, and appointing Patricia Canning as the first alternate member, and remember, there is one, still one alternate position available for the Environmental Commission, so for most of those folks who've already been on the EC, thank you, and congratulations on So for most of those folks who've already been on the EC, thank you, and congratulations on the reappointment. Excited to have you back. And with that, let's move on to our consent agenda.
Okay, resolutions 314 through resolution 320 are on the consent agenda.
Are there any questions or comments on any consent agenda items? Okay, do you have a motion?
I move.
Moved by trustee Davis Ford.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Cullen. Can we have the roll, please?
Trustee Cullen.
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Trustee Levinson.
Yes.
Trustee Rosner.
Yes.
Trustee Schnall.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Was there still, yeah, Ms. Lewis?
Yeah, quickly, we learned we had the closing on the refunding bonds for the ECA loan, and we were advised by bond council this morning that there is a requirement that I report on the results of that sale. So for, obviously, the board's aware of it, but anyone in the public who's not following it, the village had, in part, financed some of the SOPAC construction with funding from the Essex County Improvement Authority. In evaluating that funding, and certainly under the dogged leadership of the Finance Committee Chair, trustee Levinson, we evaluated that, I think determined that, given historically low interest rates, that was not the most financially beneficial to the village. We pursued, it was, it took a little while to get through, but we got it done. We authorized back in June, went through local finance board and all that stuff, and the bond sale was held, and the closing will actually be held on December 22nd. In short, we are refinancing $2.2 million of ECA funding with general obligation refunding bonds. Got very favorable with the net effective cost of the money because there was a discount, and it's one of these blended interest rates where it's lower upfront, a little higher at the tail end when the principal's lower, but it's well below 2% on a net cost of money. The bottom line is, over the remaining seven-year term, the village stands to gain, to save somewhere $75,000, $80,000 by doing this. So that's my report that we're apparently supposed to give, so.
And I want to just say kudos to our financial chair, Howard Levinson, because he has been the driver behind this change so that we could enjoy savings on behalf of all the residents. So I want to just give you kudos for your effort.
Just a side comment, those are taxable bonds, too, at those interest rates.
Okay. Let's move on to our trustee reports. Trustee Cullen?
I'm going to keep it pretty short, and I do apologize for not sending any bullet points. We actually covered a lot of the stuff from the presentations tonight. As you can see, the Irvington Avenue Quarter Advisory Committee is doing really good work, and I'm very proud of them. Within public safety, we didn't have a meeting, just because nothing really warranted a meeting. Right now, we have so many working groups that are kind of meeting throughout the month. First, there's the radio working group, working with RCC. And as you saw from Mr. Lewis's message out to the board, the grant, the AFG grant did get submitted. Special thanks to, obviously, Deputy Learner, Winning Strategies, and Mr. Lewis did a lot of the heavy lifting on his very persuasive narrative. So that grant was submitted on time. Also, we have our headquarters, our police headquarters working group, so we've been working with the architects on that. Right now, some preliminary drawings on the programming of the building have been distributed to the working group, and so we're waiting some feedback from the police department. Hopefully, we'll have some tentative budget figures for the board to look at prior to having final conversations on the capital budget. And then outside of that meeting, trustee Clark and myself met with the police department to talk about some of our traffic safety initiatives ongoing, with some information coming to the board shortly. One of the campaigns that we're looking at launching in the new year is called the Be Street Smart New Jersey Initiative, and this is through the North Jersey Transportation Authority and also the Department of Highway Safety. There's a lot of different agencies involved with what's a public awareness campaign that they've been doing in some pilot municipalities throughout the state, including Jersey City and Woodbridge. And a lot of it is low-cost ways that we can educate the public about some of the challenges that you have when you're crossing, and you're on vehicles, and you're, you know, riding a bicycle. And so a lot of the stuff is there, and that stops me from having to try and be a graphic design artist. All those, those lawn signs really did withstand some bad weather. They're still up, so, and I've got reinforcements. So we'll be looking at bringing something to the board. It's going to have a relatively modest budget for the marketing of it. And then on the enforcement side, I am pleased to announce that after speaking with some of the law enforcement representatives at the League of Municipalities, our police department has just gone above and beyond in their enforcement of pedestrian safety in this community. And I got to see some of the numbers from much larger municipalities who have embraced cops and crosswalks, and they really kind of pale in comparison to the great work that our police department is doing right now. So I was pretty proud trustee walking around saying, you know, we're doing a good job in South Orange, particularly under the leadership of Mike Corrigan, who, as you know, is head of our Traffic Bureau. So they've really embraced this program. And we're hoping to take it to the next step in the upcoming year with even more aggressive marketing, public education, enforcement initiatives. And then what trustee Clark had brought to the department was some things that he learned from the league, which is more targeted traffic details based on the data that they collect. Trustee Clark, do you want to comment a little bit on that?
Just that it's a, it's a, it's an existing program. It's, it has been used in some other towns, but it's basically data-driven enforcement. Taking a look at where your crime exists, looking at the numbers, and then reallocating manpower and efforts based upon that to really try to focus in on giving municipalities specific types of crime. And we're hoping to roll that out and take advantage of it as well.
I'd just like to add, and this is all great stuff, this is, kudos to you both. My question with this, maybe a holistic approach, and maybe another component that I would love to see is a expansion, because again, I just think that we have the best police force around. And so I won't go into that now, because I don't want to digress, because I never do. But what I'd like to do is see more effort, if not, if the effort is there, I wanted to be communicated with a great job that our police officers do, and to also have more police officers fully engaged, maybe the public relations person, I forgot his name, you know, I'm name challenged.
Community relations?
Yeah. Engaged in getting to really know the residents, but more so, I want the residents to know our police officers by name. You know, and so I would love for that to be a part of, in your committee or on your agenda, of talk about how, what you can do, the low-hanging fruit of how people can start to know the names of our police officers, because most of them, I guarantee you, don't. They just see them in a uniform or in a car, and that's it. So if you could put that as part of your initiative or a component of that.
No, I think that's a great suggestion. And trustee Clark and trustee Levinson, I've seen some back and forth, and we're working with the department right now on just, and I think they really embrace kind of the community approach, the community policing. Adrian Acevedo, one of our sergeants, is just, just really a rock star. Whenever, we get a lot of frequent requests from neighborhoods that just want to understand crime in their area, a little bit more about what they can do to be proactive, and by having probably one of the best neighborhood watch programs, and I would say arguably in the state of New Jersey, and having them have such a direct relation with community relations, they're able to get out there pretty quickly and get in front of residents, answer questions, be very proactive.
And all that's good, but, but I mean, it's even something in addition to that. Not just about what to do about crime, but I think that if they're integrated more into the community and the residents know who they are, that it's about relationships. And I think that that's so powerful. That's what I'm getting at. Maybe I'm not articulating exactly what I mean.
No, you are. I just didn't want to say out loud yet. There's, there's some things going back and forth between trustee Clark and trustee Levinson. But before we, before we put that out there, I want to make sure the department.
That's all, you don't have to, but that's all, that's, that's what I'm interested in.
100%. I think it's a great idea, too.
We could talk about it. It's an idea that's been here previously. It's using playing cards, like baseball cards or a deck of cards with the officer's picture, and using it as an incentive for the officers to hand it out to the public, as well as to the youngsters. Having a program that involves some of the businesses, like, like the Cold Stone, where if the kids are doing something good, they get a card, they can go cash it in for an ice cream cone. There was an article that I just passed around, I think it was Metatchen, has a program like this, which is a very effective way of getting to know your local officer, face-to-face.
Yeah, they're all great ideas. I think anything that gives our police department more exposure to the residents is good. So we'll just work through the police department, community relations, see which ones that they want to kind of work on, run with, and maybe slowly roll some more and more things out.
Wonderful.
Great.
They'll probably need some support from us. Hopefully not too much funding to support, we're trying to try to go with the easier things. But yeah, they're going to need our support as well, so.
So that covers public safety. There is, as you know, a guess that's going to be coming out pretty shortly, and one of the things that the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee was very excited about was working with the Parking Authority, South Orange seniors. A special thanks to Mark Hartwick. Starting January 1st will be the new calendar for the Senior Citizen route with some new efficiencies at no additional cost, just better use of existing resources, and taking some of the feedback from both the community forum that we did and also the Senior Citizen visits on where people would like to go. And a lot of it is between the two towns, South Orange and Maplewood. So hopefully Maplewood will reciprocate, and we can work with them in the future on ways that we can do this together. The Business Code Review Task Force is continuing to push forward. We had our second public meeting with the business owners. We also have a survey that's currently out there via Survey Monkey, which we are collecting feedback. So if you speak to some business owners, property owners who deal with our codes on an ongoing basis, they should have the link already from SAVCA or from the Irvington Avenue Committee. Please encourage them to take that survey. We've extended the deadline to the end of December so that the group has ongoing feedback from people, especially the people we're trying to serve, on the things that we can do to make our business climate a little bit more business-friendly. And I think that basically, wait, okay, fine, I'll end.
All right, very nice. Trustee Davis Ford?
We met regarding, we met on November the 24th, and just maybe three or four things I'm going to speak about. One, there was a discussion about alarm fees and whether or not this is something important to have established in South Orange. And the reason being is that most of the calls that police are drawn to respond to are alarms. And the debate was, is there a better return on the investment of their time and the taxpayers' money for the police force as opposed to answering for false alarms? And the person who's a member of the committee who's taking the lead on this is trustee Levinson, so I'd like you to, you know, continue the discussion regarding why you believe that there would be a benefit to having alarm fees.
Well, it's a fee associated to false alarms. But part of the process would be the registration of people who have alarm systems within their homes and a, basically a permit to have, when they're installed, so that we have a record of who they are and who the service providers are in case the alarms go off. Because part of the problem is, is that if it's unattended, the police can go into the homes or the fire department can go into the homes to shut the alarms off. But the other part of it is, is that, one, we understand where they are. The other part is that we want to reduce the number of unwanted responses by the police department to these alarms. This was triggered by something that we were doing in the police department and the dispatch center, where they had an obsolete piece of equipment, where the alarm companies had a direct wire into the police department, which was an obsolete piece of equipment, which was removed. And in the process of code review, we recognized that our alarm system code was obsolete. So this is an update to that process. And we reviewed a number of other municipalities in what they're doing. Montclair has a third party who provides the service for the registration of the alarm panels. So it's something that we are looking into.
No, I don't know.
I think we're ready to reintroduce it, too. I think we had consensus. The only thing that, I think there was some disagreement, and then we came to agreement, was that we weren't going to charge the way other, we weren't turning this into an additional fee for people to register their alarm. Rather, we would, and I think it was Adam's suggestion, using Property Pilot and allow this to be advertised well for a year for people to willingly register online or maybe in person, not have any fees associated with it, so we can collect that important data. It benefits public safety, it benefits our police department, it reduces the 1,300 false alarm cars that we have, calls annually, but we're not creating an additional fee for residents. So we'll get compliance hopefully over the year, allow that to take its natural course, and then if need be, start issuing penalties.
And that's a real good point, because this is not a, we're not looking to create an opportunity to create a revenue stream. We're just looking for an opportunity that our police officers are not pulled to deal with false alarms. And some people, you know, during the course of the year may have had false alarms three, four, five, six times. And when you have a, when you start to put all of these false alarms together, those are police officers who are not on the street, who are not in their cars, dealing with bigger priorities. And so we're, all we're looking to do is to better manage the resources that we have.
We should also add that, one of the things we did in public safety over a year ago was we spoke to them about giving that an educational piece. So when they went to call on a false alarm, something was given to them about it. And number two is that sometimes false alarms that get reported as false alarms are not really false alarms. Somebody could go to a door, try and jiggle it, couldn't get in, or hear an alarm, or something like that, and left. We just weren't sure, we just know that nobody was home. So when we say 1,400 false alarms, although I think the chief said the number had been going down since they've been starting out, handing out the educational pieces, is that we know there were 1,400 calls where there was nobody there and no apparent attempt to break in. So we can't, we can't always identify a false alarm as a false alarm.
Yeah, but one of the things that gives us the ability to see flagrant violations, that we now have a software product that, when an alarm comes in, it gets logged, and it knows if we have, what number of previous calls were made from that particular.
And the fines don't start until it gets to repeat behavior. Like, the first time, whoopsie, second time, whoopsie. Once you start getting third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh.
That was the big concern, because there were some houses which were repeat offenders. And I think that one house, I think he said, had 10 or 11 calls in one year is because kids or pets or something were causing the alarm to go off. And that was, that was the bigger concern versus a, some of the other people who might have one false alarm a year, which may not be, really be a false alarm, but, so.
Can we have, Mr. Rother, can we have that ready for a first reading at our next meeting? I think we're through committee and through the board, so.
Yeah, we're ready.
Yeah, Katie had it put together, yeah.
Great.
The next thing I want to talk, we had a discussion regarding a request for paid sick leave to be adopted by, by resolution by this board. And several towns have passed that. But we wanted to have an opportunity to hear in-committee advocates for this mandated paid sick leave. And it was very informative, and I think that we agreed the next steps is to convene some stakeholders at another meeting regarding that. That means small businesses in the community and other stakeholders. And so I'm working on trying to coordinate a meeting for that. And once we have that and get that feedback, we'll bring it back to committee to evaluate the feedback or input from that meeting, and then make a recommendation to the board.
Trustee, is there anything being done at the state level or the county level on this, or we haven't researched that far?
No, my understanding is they were looking for it to be more of a grassroots for a critical mass of municipalities, I think there are five. And that would be something that they could leverage to go to the county or the state level to do. That is their strategy. And so just from looking at how the other towns have adopted it, and it was discussed, the town that we really want to look like, that has the demographics similar to ours, even though they're much bigger, is Montclair. And to be honest with you, just at this point, and I don't have a definitive position yet, I like the approach Montclair took as opposed to the other towns that passed it, which was a discussion by the council, and it passed by a majority, and they adopted it. I liked the way Montclair, who is more similar to us than the other towns as far as demographics, meaning ethnic and economic, is that they put it up as a.
Referendum.
Referendum. And the citizens of that town voted, and they happened to pass it, and they passed it by a significant majority. So what I'm looking at as far as our process, what I'm looking to do, you know, if I get the support, you know, of the board and committee, is to have, schedule a meeting with the stakeholders and listen to that input, bring it back to committee, vet that information. And then I would be probably prone to advocate for us to put this on a referendum and let the community tell us where to, what, where to go with this.
Okay.
Okay.
One thing, if you could ask them before they, they give a stakeholder presentation, it'd be good, both Bob and Doug, I'm sure would work with you on that, at least reaching out to the business community, but one question they couldn't answer during the last legal committee was the actual administration at the local level. Because there were some larger municipalities that have a lot more resources than us. Montclair, as you noted, is a lot closer in demographics and size, it's closer than anybody else. Who administers? Who, who actually oversees this program, checks in on it? When you have a grievance to file, do you go to your local government, since it's not a state level issue? And there was a bill that was introduced, but it just didn't, I guess it didn't have a vote or it's just been tabled and hasn't moved yet.
But I think that's what the description was, it was local administration.
Yeah.
One of the things that we may want to do is to put together maybe a 101, a, a basic structure that describes what it's all about, the number of employees that a particular company would have, what the number of hours, you know, the thing that she went through. You know, the accumulation of.
Just like a fact sheet?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Which we can give to Bob.
All right. And then the other item that we discussed was following up on the CCR, the Coalition's on Res- on Resolution Regarding Ferguson. And it was presented from representatives from the CCR, their resolution that they wanted both towns to consider to adopt. And I think it was unanimous here by the board that we felt that we understood the need to address these concerns regarding the situation where people are concerned, especially people of color, in their interaction with police. We just felt that it was not representative of our town in South Orange. And we wanted to do a resolution talking about the positive things that have worked out here well, but also recognizing that there are some issues and concerns. We didn't want to be like an ostrich and put our head in the sand, but at the same time, we did not want to adopt the resolution as it presented to us because it was not the position, position and the direction we wanted to go. And so we're in, we, Free Holder Clark and I have been charged to meet and have a discussion.
You got promoted.
I'm sorry. I switched my hat, my, my job. Trustee Clark and I.
You just gave away his whole campaign strike.
I know. Have been charged to have some meetings with representatives from CCR and Maplewood to see if we can craft together a resolution that is acceptable to the whole board. Because we were unanimous in saying that we want to make a statement, but that was not the statement we wanted to make.
Trustee Davis Ford, I just had an idea in, in thinking about that, as you mentioned, you know, our demographic and fortunately, our community is, has been better off in terms of those dynamics. But there's always a concern about it and education is typically the best way of dealing with it. We didn't have the kind of demonstrations that were, you know, that was seen across the country in some places. However, there was one place in South Orange that did have it and I would think it might be interesting.
It was our high school.
Exactly. So Columbia High School, and so what you end up having is passionate kids, which I applaud their leadership. There was a few kids, amazingly, who were actually are up on current events and who read about it and led some initiatives. And I think they got some support from some teachers and I think that's great. But I think one of the things that we would like to see the CCR do is in situations where it does become dicey and has concern where education is used. I would love to see a program targeted for Columbia High School students who are dealing with these things that are sometimes above, you know, their maturity level, but they're really dealing with them, which I think I really applaud. But having an opportunity to be in a forum where there are people who are trained and used to having and leading these conversations, I think that would be a great opportunity.
You know what? I, I will make sure that I follow up on that. And I think that we have to do a better job of communicating of why we've been successful as a, a diverse and fully integrated community. There's no other community like South Orange that is not just diverse but fully integrated. And that's because we do communicate well. Can we communicate better? Absolutely. Communication is hard work. If you've been in a long-term marriage, you understand if you're still married, it's because you've done the hard work and you've got to communicate, can't rest on your laurels. Well, you know, these are all about relationships and our backgrounds, our experiences are different and to, to, to work well together, it's a lot of work. Because it's so easily to miscommunicate because you have different experiences. And one of the things, and I've been talking about this for quite some time amongst ourselves, our success that we've had and why we're such a viable community, I tweet periodically and one of my hashtags is "I love South Orange." And I love South Orange for all the things I won't go into now, but we are a healthy community surrounded by many communities that are much more challenging ours. And that's because, you know, we, we really, really do communicate and work well, better than most other communities. But we can't rest on our laurels. Getting back to CCR, one of the reasons why I advocate for continually to support them and fund them, because one of the things that they do is they have discussions. They have ongoing discussions. Are they perfect? No. And if, if they do something that we are not agreeable with or comfortable, we should call them out. But 80% of the time, they do the right thing. They are an organization that creates an environment to do the hard thing and that's talking about it. And I can give you something very basic as a, you know, and, and I'm very comfortable in saying this, is, is a person of color. I am so amazed in this day and age that people, if you, there are four Joneses in the room and, and because we don't talk about uncomfortable, it's easier if three Joneses are Caucasian and one Joan is African-American. I go, oh, we have four Joneses. Do you know the last name? That's a lot, no. Okay, is, is that person African-American or Caucasian? And people get nervous about it, which I find so bizarre. But that's because we're not comfortable. We don't talk about things. We don't talk about the elephant in the room. Does it mean that we will, after the end of the communication discussion, be in agreement on all things? Absolutely not. You have siblings, you're the same parent or whatever, and you may have discussions, you don't agree the same thing because you're different experiences. But however, my expectations, my hope, and what I really, really look for is that we have an opportunity to discuss our differences or to learn about and, and come to a better understanding, but we can do it respect, with respect. That's what I'm interested in. I don't have a problem with you disagreeing with me. Of course, I'm going to lobby and I want to win, but I don't have a problem with you disagreeing with me at all. The only problem I have is if you're disrespectful to each other. And so that's why I think the role of the CCR is to come up with programs or create venues or activities so we can discuss things, we can discuss the elephant in the room because we're a better community for it. So with that, I will take that on and, and take it back, Walter and I are liaisons to CCR and see if we can bring this to their attention that maybe we can come up with a program at a club. I was so proud of them, of what they did, not disruptive. They got together, the whole school was a, was it four and a half minutes? Because you have a, your daughter's in the school, and then it went back to class.
I believe that CCR has already looked into programs within the high school.
Okay.
I don't remember the details, though.
All right. And then a couple of other things real quickly, and this is regarding, as a liaison to our health committee, Howard and I have been meeting regarding some wellness initiatives and we've talked about it in the past for our employees and then some outreach programs that we had to table because of scheduling problems. And that is eating healthy. And this is open to all the residents in South Orange and it's going to be held at St. Andrews and it will be held in April because we just ran into some scheduling conflicts. And then a nutrition program on how to read labels at the high school, which is a field trip, and at the grammar school, which again will be rolled out into the spring because of scheduling problems. And Howard, would you like to talk about the additional meeting we had with St. Barnabas?
Well, we had a meeting which is one of the subsets of programs that they have. We're looking at doing something with them for our employees. They have an, do you remember the name of it? E.I.
E.A.P.
E.A.P.
Employee Assistant Program, right.
Yeah. Which allows each employee six sessions. We pay a fee, a monthly fee per employee, but it, for each employee, they and their family can take advantage of the, of the program, multiple services. I don't have the details here.
That's okay, just a general overview.
But it is for the wellness of our employees, like anger management, or if there was a death in the family, or if there was an incident that may have occurred with, say, either the fire department or the police force, there's a source that they could go to and it will be provided by the village.
At a very nominal cost.
Just, and, but that's just one of.
One component.
A series of programs that are being offered by St. Barnabas. I should call it Barnabas.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm done.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes. I'm going to repeat some of the initiatives specifically in the, in the police department. The software upgrades for our police department's dispatch unit are complete except for some archiving information that, from our old system. These upgrades have included the installation of a computer-aided dispatch, a graphic map display, a 9/11 upgrade to our, what's called a PSAP, which is a public safety answering point or our nine, 9/11 system, an upgrade to our facility closed-circuit television monitoring, an upgrade to our voice recording system, and new workstations and monitors. And now we're embarking onto the physical relocation of that dispatch center to a temporary quarter, which is in our old court space, so that we are going to totally renovate our dispatch location and bring it up to modern standards, where we're going to replace the furniture, the floors, the ceiling, the lighting, and then move back into that facility. It will be a new, modern facility for dispatch. And also part of the software upgrade, we have now linked our fire department in its software with the police department's software where we use a common database. That database basically is the information about locations, locations within the village. We've been working with an architect with the objective of upgrading the PD facility infrastructure while optimizing the space utilization so that it relates to the staff functions and their interrelationships. Most notable is moving our prison cells from where they're located currently to a garage, which is in the back, which is not currently used that often. The relationship change provides the, the prison side of the police totally isolated from the regular day-to-day operation. And most of the functions that will be now on, active functions will be on the first floor as part of this architectural change that we're looking at. Some of the other structural components would be really introducing code compliance in a lot of the area. One of the items that is required really is the internal staircase between the first floor and the basement, and there will be a need for putting in an elevator. As Trustee Colum mentioned before, we have completed the first phase of our public safety radio communication review by our consultants and agree, we have a common agreement that this, of a solution which will work for our PD fire department and EMS, which is utilizing the state P-25 system. And, and it worked out to be a great timeframe because there is a grant which we just, assistance to firefighters grant for the fire department component of our communication needs, which was submitted last Friday. I think the amount was about $350,000 for that grant submission, which is about half the amount that we're looking for in total for the communication structure. And this was done through Winning Strategies of Washington, which we have used in the past, which Seton Hall as well uses as a consultant for providing grants or even lobbying. And just to note that the rescue squad has successfully switched over to REMS, which is UMDN, yeah, University of, UMDNJ in Newark. In the load, loans, we planning on putting a policy, a debt policy together that targets ratios, that creates a targeted ratio for debt to various parameters and to set out a plan to reach those objectives. And as Barry mentioned before, we're closed on our refunding bond, replacing an expensive ECIA loan. In addition, while opportunity down in the conference, Walter and I basically talked to the assistant director of the DEP and talked about a loan that we could get, which is about 0% interest rates, as we found out today that they don't have forgiveness in that loan. But, but at least there is a place where we can look to obtain some funding for some of the objectives that we have in our water system. We have a significant amount of work to do in our water system and that's a place where we can get some funding. In addition, some of our other software, SO Connect, which is our, what I like to call the 3-1-1 system. Right now, some, something recent, the gas lamp outages are now being logged by PSENG in closing them out, which is a, closing out a, a process that our staff doesn't have to do it. PSENG is logging onto our system and closing out those complaints. We are in the process of an e-fax implementation throughout the village. The majority of the physical faxes are now being converted to an electronic fax version in which the fax now comes through their emails. We are going to have Laserfish, which is our repository of documents, training next week, which is, we have a new version of the, of the product.
Can I just interrupt you so?
Sure.
Getting back to the faxes coming to emails, that's a significant savings on paper supplies?
No.
Or is it more of part of a green initiative?
No, it's, it's, well, it's a paperless initiative, but it, it now eliminates the need for having fax lines, which run about $35 to $40 a, a month.
Sort of a personal vendetta.
Yes. Absolutely. Put an X to the.
I think it's vendettas against fax machines and phone companies.
And phone companies. And it goes along with the, our objective of having a paperless environment. And one of the, another one of the initiatives that we're looking forward to, to something starting next year, scanning documents that are in our archives and getting them now put onto a hard disk where we can now do searches and do data mining if need be. But we can now throw away the paper.
Why, why put them on a hard disk as opposed to the cloud?
Well, we have our.
Okay. All right.
Disks or in the cloud.
Okay.
Another product that we put in, which is called WTH, which provides a geocoded mapping facility, we have now mapped out our water system. It's now on our Property Pilot. We can see where all the fire hydrants are, where all of the valves are for our water system, and hopefully we'll see where all the pipes are interconnected. And that's about it.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Schnaugh.
All right. So as we're coming to the calendar year end, it's a good opportunity to sort of take a survey of, of what went on during the year and planning for the next year. So in the Recreation and Cultural Arts Committee, we have been taking a look at infrastructure issues and including the building itself, the Baird, as well as the tennis courts, and trying to consider really what is. and trying to consider really what is necessary for improvements, what can be maintained in its current state, and what we need to go out and actually start over again. So we've been having those conversations. No decisions yet on that that probably will be coming up soon, and probably bringing that to this board for discussion and voting early next year. As part of that review, though, there were a couple of first-time programs that occurred in 2014 in the REC area, which were really successful, and the planning is already in place to repeat them in 2015. So those two events, for the first time, were the children's, kids' triathlon event. And this coming year, it's likely to be shared with Maplewood, so we're going to, this could be a, something we're going to initiate for the two towns. And the other was the historic baseball event, which we did in conjunction with the Historic Preservation Commission. And both those events were so successful that they've been-
That was wonderful.
It was fun, wasn't it?
Yeah.
It was a lot of fun. We have a lot of fun. So that's, that's kind of where we stand in the REC and cultural arts. The Public Information Marketing Committee continues to meet both regularly at, on our monthly meetings as well as very strong subcommittees. We have a policy group that is currently making a recommendation for our website. As Trustee Levinson has shared, we have a number of applications that we've been rolling out and continue to roll out for the village. He mentioned SO Connect, the Everbridge application for informing. We have an application that is going to be, is sort of in a beta right now around a virtual village hall, as well as a new volunteer platform. So introducing these, anytime you introduce new technology, you have to consider what the policies, procedures around privacy, security in those issues. So that committee has been doing a really nice job in making some recommendations that we hope to finalize very soon. Another initiative that is, I think, very popular because it appears to me is the, one of the most sought-after issues or questions is a common calendar. So for the purposes of planning, so when we do do events, various different organizations and committees can know what others are planning and doing, as well as just for our residents to find out what's going on on any given day or weekend. That is something that we're looking into, who would be the best place to host it, how it would be, the data would be accumulated and aggregated. And so that's something, hopefully, we're going to have, hopefully, a solution for that in the first quarter of next year. We also had a group, Trustee Clark was very involved as well with, with the team to take a look at, for these new applications, putting sort of a brand to them, a naming, just like we have SO Connect. We're looking to sort of borrow that SO for South Orange type of idea for branding for the various applications. We hope to introduce that as well in the next, in the, in the near term. Moving on to SOPAC, I always feel like it's, it's nice, given that we're, we're sitting here using their stage. I believe this past month of November was the busiest month ever for SOPAC in terms of the number of events, as well as the number of people who came to see events. I know I was at, I think, three events this past, in the last month that were sold out. Arlo Guthrie, David Bromberg, The Giants of Jazz. Each of those very, very different in terms of the genre or the style, but every one of them had a terrific engaged audience and was, was really a lot of fun. So again, kudos to all the employees that work at SOPAC, as well as the volunteers who allowed these events to happen.
Trustee Schnell?
Yes?
That's great news. Are you able to get a sense of the economic benefit or driver of these sold-out events to the restaurants in the area before, after? Do you have any sense of that at all?
Well, so there was a statement, so in addition, I guess what you're saying is, in addition to the, when a show sells out, it's, it's profitable for, you know, obviously the, the revenue is wonderful, but you're saying indirectly, you know, by people coming in. And one of the things, we do have data, is that a number of people are coming, as our programming becomes more and more interesting and diverse and varied, folks are coming from farther and farther away, from actually different counties, and we're bringing new people to not only visit this stage, but our restaurants and our retailers. So it was quantified, I think, last year. Executive Director Mark Packer came and reported. Hopefully, when he reports in, again, next quarter, he may have an updated set of numbers. But I know it's north of a million.
So would you ask if he would be able to bring that information to us?
Sure.
When he comes before us? I would love to see what the real impact of-
I think that's a great idea. I will ask him to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then lastly, I just wanted also to feature the Community Relations Committee. Part of their responsibility, we see them periodically here, they're the ones that help us to have a villager of the month and to laud those people for their participation. They are also being asked to help facilitate where there are new community groups or organizations that are trying to find like-minded people, where they might be able to get together, whether it forms a full committee or just, but again, as community relations, that's their job. And so there were two groups that have approached myself, and I've asked the, the committee to figure out ways that they can, again, facilitate their, their, just even if it's a meeting place or promoting it, finding ways for them to find themselves. But an LGBT group, as well as a younger adult group, folks in their twenties and thirties, again, who are trying, both of these groups are looking for people who have common shared interests, that they can speak together. So CRC is going to try to entertain and figure out best ways to do that. And that's what I got for today.
All right. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the meeting up for public comments again, so if there's anybody who wants to speak. Nope? Okay. So we did discuss the wellness program already. Trustee Rosner, did you want to discuss Marylawn?
Yeah, we've had a couple of meetings with the group of stakeholders regarding Marylawn, and one of the issues that came up was, was about Marylawn, which is, has not been, just for the historical perspective, operated as a school, and there was also an old house that had been used as a convent at one time, which closed up a few years ago. And they tried to sell that half of the property to help fund the continuation of school, but they then decided they wouldn't keep the school open, and they merged it into one of the other schools that's run by the same group. So the, so the property has not been operating as a school or in any way, shape, or form. It's just been sort of abandoned, it's not being non-use. One of the things that was suggested, we should consider putting this back on the tax roll. I understand that legally, it's not our call. It's up to the, to the tax assessor, and I guess Barry could, to the administrator could give more information, but I thought we should discuss it about Marylawn, and just wanted to update that we're having some ongoing meetings. We're not going to have any, another one until I get some more information back from the attorneys and from the administrator about whether we can see the site and, and so forth. But is there anything you want to add about the process of taking it off the tax roll? Or putting it on the tax roll?
Yeah, no, and I have certainly been in touch with the assessor about it. It's something I know she's examining. I think there was, as I think most people are aware, there was at one point a belief that it was potentially going to be transferred to another exempt entity for another exempt use in the, in a relatively short time period. That seems to have fallen by the wayside, so I know she's going to look at it. I will follow up with her tomorrow because clearly if it's not eligible for the exemption, then it should be contributing taxes like every other property.
Also, I think that the committee, when we discussed it, and it's something that I learned, it is not the entity that owns the property, being a nonprofit or tax-exempt, it's the actual use of the property. And I think we all have a pretty good consensus and belief that because we know that's not being used right now for a tax-exempt purpose, and that the, from the advertising from the sisters, moving forward, it appears that they are aggressively going for a non-tax-exempt use purpose for the facility, in which case it would be appropriate to move it back to the town.
Right. It's not only they're marketing it for, for different purposes, they're marketing it for a non-conforming use at this point.
Exactly.
Because the property is zoned for single-family, and you could argue whether it's going to be five to seven homes or 10 to 12 in homes, depending on which zoning it is, but they're marketing it for multifamily homes, which can mean a lot of different things. So unless the zoning changes, that marketing doesn't make sense, but it's clear they want to maximize their profit-
Sure.
-on their property.
As anybody should.
Yes.
And that goes the same for the village, too, is that, that property being what it is and how it's marketed.
Absolutely.
And assuming that it falls within the appropriate guidelines. Mr. Rother, could you perhaps take the public through kind of what this process looks like? If we're saying right now, the board is interested in this, obviously it's outside the scope of our immediate authority, but what would happen in this type of scenario?
Well, the assessor would put the property presumably on the tax rolls starting January 1 of, of next year. The first bill that they would, of course, get would be in the second half, reflecting back. The property owner, of course, could have the opportunity to challenge the assessment, both the fact of the assessment and the amount of the assessment. And that, of course, is a potential risk to the village because if a, an appeal is successful, as was discussed earlier, the burden falls on the municipality. We, we have looked at, though, the risk, and we don't think that there is much of a risk in this particular circumstance, and we're going to be giving you and the assessor a formal opinion on that topic.
Great.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I had brought this up because I actually think not necessarily just, this isn't for punitive reasons, but I do want, I think one of the things that we want to avoid is a situation where the property lies fallow as we go through multiple iterations of, of potential developers coming in and then it not being approved. And unless there's a very strong incentive to make sure a, a, a deal is done that, that is collaborative, that works for what the village is looking for, as well as the sisters and the neighborhood, I feel like this is something that will just add an incentive to make sure time is, is calculated. It's going to have, there's a time value. And I think nobody wants to have a, a piece of property that continues to deteriorate in front of our eyes. So I think this is a good, good step going forward.
And also, parallel to that is, under Trustee Rosner and Planning and Zoning is the working group, I don't want to say a working group, but kind of, we've invited the residents to participate in talking about alternative, alternative zoning opportunities for the property that the village may want to consider. So that's something, that's being very proactive about that property as well, if we could build some consensus there and bring it back to the Board of Trustees.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Unless there's any new business?
New business?
Yeah?
I wanted to really thank Tom, who's the director of our DVW, for looking into a matter in Newstead regarding safety. And it's been going on for quite some time, but I was really alarmed this morning due to the drop of temperature of a real safety hazard where the intersection of Overhill and Spear and Overhill and Duffield is a sheet of ice, and you're coming down and turning into that. It's really, really scary. People who live there are kind of aware of it because it's been there for several years, this problem, but if you're not aware of it, you could really be severely injured or, or worse. And it appears that the problem is, and Trustee Levinson, you've been working on this, too, that under investigation, meaning following the ice or the flow, that it's a sunk pump that's not tied into the sewer system, coming from a resident or two residents on Duffield, and this water is coming out of the sunk pump down the street, around the corner, and down to these two intersections. And when there's a lot of rain or, or thaw or whatever, these areas in the intersection, there's a sheet of ice. It's really scary. So I'm going to ask-
Yeah, we'll follow up certainly.
If you really follow up, I mean, it's a real, real major safety hazard. So my understanding is that the process is that the homeowners need to be contacted, made aware of their responsibility of having, having the sunk pump discharge tied into our storm sewer?
Storm sewer, yes.
Storm sewer. And my question is, if they, is there a time that they have to do this? And if they don't respond on the time that is presented to them, what are the steps for remediation?
The code written does not permit it. Sometimes it becomes challenging. I'm not familiar with the particular house you're speaking of. Sometimes there are not storm drains in proximity or in front of the house, so that presents a challenge. There's alternatives to put dry wells or other ways to retain the water on your own property. Regrettably, these situations usually come up at this time of year when it's frozen, and the problem is, it's also when the ground's frozen, which makes it difficult to install dry wells, and then you don't find, you know, people forget about it in the spring because it's just water running down the street. But I will certainly follow up with code enforcement, you know, Mr. Machete, to make sure his, his troops are aware of it as far as salting or what needs to be done in the interim to avoid a dangerous condition, but we'll follow up with code enforcement.
Something reasonable. I mean, if you can't-
Yeah, to give an opportunity and see what can be done.
Yeah, if you can't do something because it's cold, but you are right. This has been going on for years, and then, you know, the warm weather comes and you forget about it. But again, it's just really, it's getting-
I'll follow up.
Thank you.
Sure.
But I think there were a number of local properties within the village that are in the same situation.
Okay. That's it.
Okay. All right. I have motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Let Wally second.
All in favor?
Oh, that was bad.
Please.
Why you sit with these guys?
Pities.[1702.15]